So I'll, oh, acting chair right now. Yeah. All right.
Hello.
Very good. You can pause to that. I'll get me another minute. No, just go ahead.
Sure. Okay. All right. So I'll, yeah. Would you all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Put the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Yeah.
To the republic which stands our nation.
And to the people who have a right to freedom and justice for all.
Right. Awesome. So I'll, till we elect officers, I'll just be acting chair and get the meeting started. Is that already everybody? No. Okay. So with that, I'll call the Damerskata Select Board to order for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. No. Don't mind before we dig into anything, I'd like to congratulate a couple of folks over here to our left. So Andrea did a great job there in reelection. And then we have a new Select Board member over here, which is Daryl. He spells his name wrong. I want everybody to.
I came first.
I want to point that out in public that it's, there's only one R in Daryl, but he's, you know, I won't fault him for that. So.
Thank you, Daryl.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You can blame yourself for the differentiating.
R. So we can say R and double R?
Yeah, they're R and double R. Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, welcome, welcome aboard and welcome. I don't say welcome back. It didn't really go anywhere, Andrea. Yeah. So, cool. And we tried to get him to, you know, we told him that there was a, he had to do some sort of PowerPoint presentation, but.
I forgot. I didn't bring it.
He didn't fall for it. So, sorry.
You're starting off mean.
Oh, yeah. So I suppose, yeah, before we go through, we probably should move up the officer's election stuff first.
Okay.
Get that out. If that's pleases the board, we'll jump around on the agenda a little bit. So if it's, if it's all right with, with everybody, I like to jump down to number seven and go right into number one there and do the, our officer elections and meeting schedule. That makes sense?
Sure.
Okay. So, so we have Chair, Vice Chair, First Vice Chair and Second Vice Chair, right? Three?
Yeah, I nominate Dan Hunter for First Vice Chair.
I'll second that. All right. So we've got Dan for First Vice. We've got a second. Any discussion? Those in favor? All right, Dan. There you go. Yeah. Hey.
Cool. I nominate Daryl. Which one?
Here we go already.
Chair.
Thank you, Andrea. Yeah.
The second path.
Any, any discussions? Dan's second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Well, thank you. If you guys have faith in me to continue, I'll, I'll wait until you don't want me to anymore. So, and then I suppose, yeah, Tom, do you nominate as, as Second Vice? Do you want to?
Sure.
Unless you have any objections?
No.
No? Okay. No. Just need a second if we're second to that. Andrea's going to second. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? All right. That's good, right? Yeah, that. And then I'll make a motion to set our regular meeting schedule for the first and third Wednesday each month at five thirty at the town office. That work? They get that right? And he's looking.
That's what we're doing. That's what we've been doing.
Yep. Okay. Dan's going to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that business out of the way? Officers and meetings, all right? Okay, awesome. Good. All right, let's move back. Now we'll go back to the beginning. And let's see, so we have the minutes of June fourth. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Anything look good?
They're the main.
That a motion, Tom?
Yes.
To go forth. You can move that right into a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move Tuesday.
June four.
June fourth minutes to be approved.
Second. Andrea seconded. Any discussion? None. All those in favor? Yeah. All right. We have a whole bunch of payroll warrants. So I suppose folks want to get paid here. We skipped a week. So I'll move payroll fifty eight, fifty nine and sixty. Second. Thank you, Andrea. Any discussion? No, those in favor? Okay, those are good. And then we have one counts payable warrant. And assume that's sixty one. It wasn't marked, but yeah, that's what I put it down at. So, yeah. I'll, I'll move AP sixty one.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, good there. So housekeeping out of the way. Andy, anything last minute citizen comments or?
Uh, not on the citizen comments. I did have a couple minor changes on the agenda.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I added you another, another version and I omitted, omitted still another one that I needed to provide you. So we're not covering the officer swearing in, just a communication thing with Chief and Sarge and I. But presumably that could be as early as next week.
Yeah, okay.
Just double check with them.
Yeah.
And the audit, we're taking that off for this meeting. You have a copy of the draft. Our new email address caused Cheryl's email request for them to attend.
Oh, yeah.
With their spam.
Yeah.
And they finally saw it today and.
Thank you, technology.
And so they weren't going to be able to attend today because they just saw it today. But I think they're lined up to come next week.
Okay.
So I'll give you an extra week to read that.
Yeah.
Great document.
Yeah.
It was scary.
Yeah.
I, I enjoy it.
And then the only other thing that isn't on your amended agenda would be to consider adding the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission Utility Feasibility Request, which I gave you a packet.
We've got a copy of the.
Pages for we can talk about later.
Okay. So you want to add that to action items then?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, all right.
So with the strategic plan and in with the LCR piece?
Out with the swearing in of the police officer, number two.
Okay.
Yeah. Two and six are out.
What's your plan still?
Right.
Financial audit. We're still in with the strategic.
We'll just add it at the end, whatever the number that might be. Just somebody nudge me if I go and say, we're done with official action items. I said, wait a minute. Okay. What about the handout? All right. Well, yeah. So let's, if there's no other, I don't see anybody coming in and we don't have a lot of people out in the audience here. So we'll move away from citizen comments at this point. So Andy, anything? Yeah, some highlights on your report? Anybody have anything they want to dig into? Nothing's happened in the last few weeks. Been quiet, right?
Plenty going on.
Did you get any feedback from town meeting?
Um, I did. I saw at least one out who was in attendance to see the PowerPoint presentation in particular, because that was something I remember hearing from last year's meeting that they would like to have a little more context. I mean, you go through the budget process and with the Budget Committee and the Board and it's sometimes easy to forget perhaps that a lot of people attended those and they probably want something more than just.
Yeah.
The article written. So they were very appreciative of the information that was there.
That was great.
Still a lot to understand and want to know, but they were happy with that additional information at least.
Yeah.
Other than that, we did pick up some interest for the Budget Committee, which we got on the agenda for tonight. And there's another, a fourth person that's interested as well. But they haven't submitted. They were just wanted to follow up with more information.
Yep. Okay. Right. Anybody have any questions about anything in this management report?
So is there four interested parties? I only saw three.
I saw three.
Three currently.
Yeah.
I'll, we'll bounce down to that in a second, guys here. Just want to make sure we're all set on the, on the Andy's report there and questions on anything. So.
Anyone get a chance to drive out Keen Woods yet?
Haven't yet.
Okay. I don't think they're completely done paving. They have a few driveways to add another layer to, but otherwise it's pretty well completed and I think it's come out pretty darn good.
I was out just, they hadn't paved yet, but it was kind of a little bit and it was, that was better. It was much better than.
They were new to come yesterday, but I'm assuming they might have called that off.
Yeah.
Given the heat.
Yeah.
They were paving in Belfast.
Really?
Ooh.
Toasty.
Yeah, Keen Woods is, have you been out through Keen? That's, man.
I will.
Went out. It looks good.
Day. Yeah.
Yep.
It's like, it was so bad. Oh, great, great. All right. Well, we'll, we'll keep plugging through here. So we'll go back down to.
I do have.
Yeah.
Oh, so good. Yeah. I was just curious when I was, is that there's two new folks that are working for us, kind of Megan and, and somebody else.
Yes. So Megan, kind of last name, I can't fully remember exactly how to pronounce it. It was Sabreback or Sabro. So she's a summer intern through the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center. It's a partnership with MMA in the school to try and get people into state and local government positions. So they're college students. Megan's at Orno. And she's working on some community development, economic development initiatives. The Business Licensing Ordinance Research is one of them. Following a conversation from the budget process this year around whether we should have offsetting revenue, acknowledging a license fees. And that was, no, let's not get the cart before the horse. Let's learn more. So she's been working on pulling some information together for that. She's also working on what we're calling a community resource inventory and looking at nonprofits in particular that are, that serve Damerskata, the residents, and coming up with a kind of a spreadsheet or a database that we could look at when we look at the comprehensive plan and the board strategic plan to say, who can we partner with potentially on some of these things? Who's already doing this work around housing or wellness or, you know, whatever the area is and help us internally be able to reach out to people. And then she's starting to look at now some downtown TIF programs. One thing that was also highlighted in the comp plan as a tool. There's a fourth one. Oh, that she's helping, she was interested in the strategic planning process of the board. And so she's doing a little bit of background work on helping pull some information together. She's taken the comp plan goals that have been approved and pulling those over to the work plan that you had for this year to see what maybe we're already working on that could align with some of those strategies. So, yeah, it's been great to have her be able to focus on those. And that program will end mid-August, second week, I think, of August. So we have her till then. And the fellow comes in. Island Fellow will come in in September. Still looking for housing, I believe. So anyone knows anything. And their project will be largely focused on the comp plan. To start, I'll be helping with the strategic planning process and then the implementation strategies or plan of the comp plan itself and how it tied together. And the software that we've bought into, we're actually with Megan's help, going to start on July one is when we can access it and see if she can get the comp plan into the program at least. And we'll have to take, spend the time to train the fellow as well when they get here. But we can already start with the information in there for those that were involved with it or remember, there was quite a few pages of initiatives and strategies. And so just getting that information in there could, would be a good feat to accomplish. And then the other new one might be, we got two others. I guess I'm not sure. Those are the two you were thinking of or?
Those were the two, but I guess there is a.
We have a new worker at Public Works. He's been for a couple of weeks now, Mason Goodman. And then the police officer who joined the police department a couple of weeks ago was able to, day one was a hundred hour course. So it just was such that it was the timing lined up that he, he was able to get right to it on day one. So his first two weeks were spent at the hundred hour kind of course or small academy. And he's, he's on tonight, working with the sergeant who's FTOing him. He'll have to go to the.
What's his name? McGavin.
Connor.
I knew Connor.
Yeah.
I, I heard it once and I'm, yeah, okay.
So I'm hoping he'll be at swearing in. We can hopefully do it the next meeting. He was, was, came up this afternoon and saw Becky and got sworn in with her. But it's not always great to do a public, official kind of swearing in that way. You can bring his family if he wants.
Okay.
So I think those are all the new faces right now.
And, and I guess now that we're on personnel, somewhere in there, you mentioned something about the police department is also down in admin person. It's causing them great angst.
Yeah. So Jason has interviewed one person today and two more tomorrow for that position. The administrative assistant did resign last week or the week before. So looking to fill that position now.
His part.
Eleven years?
Yeah. Just thinking. Been a while.
Find somebody. At least he's got, that's some interviews. So.
Yep. Yeah, I think that one, it's a good reminder, you know, downstairs, you know, for that need for cross-training. We've talked a little bit about that, Jason and I, about, you know, making sure whether it's the website, communications, just internal policies or, or systems, you know, the, the need to make sure more than one person is kind of the, knows how to do all that. So unfortunate way to have to do it, but nonetheless, way, a way to be able to kind of bring that to the forefront and learn from that. So.
Hopefully, hopefully it's not too disruptive.
I think it'll be. Okay. Yeah. She feels pretty confident about the candidates he's, he's received so far. And I imagine by the end of the week, he'll probably offer it to one of them. So.
Oh, good. Yeah.
And then hopefully two or three weeks we'll have, have it back in place.
Short term, hopefully.
Yeah.
Nice. All right. Well, moving along, folks, let's look at, so we do have, and we'll go down to Budget Committee appointments now. Andy, you just mentioned you have another potential.
Another potential. They had reached out. They were also, all three people on for tonight to be considered were at the town meeting.
Yep.
And then the fourth person who's reached out to me and just wants to get more information about all of it was also at the town meeting. And I've seen her, she called here, talked to some of the staff. I saw her in passing like the next day and I said, I haven't.
Does anybody have any objections if we table appointments till next meeting? And, and then if we've got another one, because we have what, four, four spots or five spots open?
Yeah, let me pull that up quick.
Doesn't even, when does the Budget Committee actually start doing their work? It's in the fall, right?
It's in the fall.
Uh, yeah.
Like November.
November, I think.
End of October, maybe.
Yeah, the way we, the last couple of years, the way I've done it is we pulled them with, together with you in a joint meeting, usually middle of November, early December.
Right, yeah.
And just talk about, you know, maybe things that we're seeing, we'll know what the COLA is at that point. And, you know, any trends going into winter or, you know, that we just should be mindful of. If there's major changes in contracts or rates for something, we maybe will know that ahead of time, just to kind of set the stage. And then I've asked the last couple of years, like, you know, is there a target, you know, for the budget? Is there an expectation that the department head should be aware of? This year's going to have the addition, hopefully of a strategic plan in place or at least process started. And then I'm hoping there'll be at least far enough along the way that there'll be something for the staff to then use to help build budgets based on something a little more.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, whatever it's worth. It would make sense even to hold off until like September to do budget appointments. Because I know from the town meeting, there were a lot of people interested.
There was quite a few votes, it seemed like, yeah.
And just wandering around town. There's a lot of people that are just curious about taxes. And so when they ask about why taxes are going up so much, I, I try to encourage them to say, you know, there's, there's a way for you to get involved, become more knowledgeable about these things. And that's the Budget Committee. So it would be great to have more than, you know, I mean, if.
But we only.
Seven people interested, then maybe.
We only have so many slots to fill.
We do, but we don't have to like, it doesn't have to be first come that.
But if you have to fill, you'd like to have more than four candidates.
But also we can have, some people can be on the Budget Committee and, I mean, they can attend the meetings.
Yeah, there's all.
Not be on the committee, right?
No, that's. I have, yeah, I mean, I think I know what you're saying. And I don't have any objection to like, if we want to, we want to wait a little because it's not, doesn't have to happen tonight or even next meeting if we want to let it.
Keep it open until first meeting in September, let's say.
Yeah, or even if, if we get a, yeah, if you get a handful of candidates coming in or something, we can, we can give it a little bit more time and then say, Andy, anybody else or something? You know, a few weeks, I've got ten people.
Dan just needs more time to walk the streets.
I do.
So we have.
A few more.
We have, we have two open terms, full-term people. But so they're supposed to, by charters, they're supposed to be elected based on the recommendations of the Select Board at town meeting. We have one term ending June twenty twenty six. That's unfilled currently. A term ending June twenty twenty eight that's unfilled. And then two alternate seats available. So there's four seats available, two full members. And then if any of those meetings have short count, the alternates would be able to vote in their absence. So there's four seats open technically for the committee. All of them would serve for one-year terms and, you know, and then it's the next town meeting at which the board would recommend to fill those.
Right.
With the remaining terms with somebody.
But we were supposed to elect them at town meeting.
There were two people that were currently on that wanted to continue. So you elected two, but no one at that meeting volunteered. Right. Yeah. No, no one. Then you appoint, appoint for a year and then they, that cycle through the next town meeting. So. But we, yeah, we can, we can wait a little bit just to see. I mean, there's, yeah.
And then we're sitting up, it sounds like make a decision regarding like who are the full timers and who are the alternates? Or it's like, there's still some.
Yeah.
Decisions that got to be made around that.
Yeah, I think we had one alternate this past year, but I don't know that they actually made. They might have made one meeting. I don't think they made any of the other ones. And we had, certainly had meetings where we didn't have the full members, all the full members in attendance. So.
Well, there's supposed to be nine, right? Nine plus two alternates.
Seven plus two alternates.
Seven.
I believe.
Yeah. And there's four.
No, I think it's supposed to be nine voting members and two alternates. That's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to have that filled. So, all right. So I think we're, we're consensual. We'll just, we'll wait a little. It doesn't have to happen tonight. So we can, we can, we can wait a little bit and, and see, Andy, if you get the doors, you know, your door's getting knocked down with candidates and just, yeah, let us know and.
Okay.
Well.
It's not a bad thing if there's a lot of people interested.
There's no, not at all, Dan. No, it's, it'd be nice. Yeah. See, see some more folks coming in. So absolutely. So, all right. So we won't, no action on that tonight then. All right. You know, the liquor license is up, but there's nobody here waiting for him. So.
And. Anna's on.
Well, she, I didn't see anybody on there. Oh, I'm sorry. If I didn't know that, I would have moved her up here. No. So I'm, Anne, I'm sorry. She is. Oh, she's up there. I didn't see her on there. I would have, I would have asked to move her up in the agenda there. So I apologize for that. So let's get, let's get Coco's sandwich bar.
So I'll make the motion to prove Coco's sandwich for our liquor license.
Thank you, Tom. Second, Andrew's gonna second that one. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right. Good enough. And. Andy, when?
So the new process is Becky will process it and it's just all online now, I believe. She, Anne doesn't have to come back and pick anything up. It's states actually streamline the process, I believe.
Yeah.
It seems so, yes.
Awesome. She's on mute.
No, she's not. I think the TV volume might need to get.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Hang on, we're on it. Yeah.
Okay.
We hear you.
Yeah, I was just saying, yeah, I think it is a new process.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Have you sorry, I didn't. Have you sorry, I didn't see you on there. Would have moved you up in the agenda earlier. So.
No worries.
Yeah. It looks like it's been pretty, pretty busy there.
Yeah, yep, it's picking up.
Awesome.
Yep, yep. Very good. We need it badly.
Good enough. Thank you.
All right. I'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have King Iders Pub.
When the Carol?
We can maybe see if you want to speak up now, if you want. Do you want a motion?
I would love to make a motion for King Iders Pub's liquor license.
All right, boom. Tom's gonna second it. All right, any discussion? Those in favor? All right. And I'll take, I'll take why not if any of them are jacks.
I like their sandwiches.
I'll throw that one in there because if I don't, Carol will come up and she's right next door to me. So I'll move the liquor license for renewal for why not on the on the water. And I think Tom seconded already before I made the motion. So. You're pulling the Josh down there now. You're seconding stuff before I even get finished.
I think a good sandwich.
Yeah. All right. Any discussions? All those in favor? Okay, it is done. All right. Now we have the fire station roof replacement bid and get a flip through four hundred and eighty-two pages of.
Note before that, actually.
Sorry for not numbering.
No, you're fine. Yeah.
Just gonna ask for a number two.
For us. Yeah. It's both those. Hang on.
Yes, just after those.
I was gonna say, Dan, what page is it? What page is it on?
Approximately page sixty.
We'll just need over and look at yours. So.
I have sixty.
Approximately page sixty. Good enough. So.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like there was a recommendation here for for Gary, right?
Gary was the ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. We had six responses for this project and it was fantastic compared to the special compared to the other two bids that were out.
I noticed that like three of them were from out of state.
I was surprised how far away some, yeah, that was.
The most expensive because they did an awful lot of work on it.
Very surprised to see that.
Right?
Not like special work to put a roof on fire station, is it?
Not that fire station, no. I mean, it's in construction in the late nineties. It's a pretty simple, no major peaks and valleys or anything in there to be concerned about. Really, there's the host tower that that ties in. But, you know, even even that, the majority of you know, it's very little impact compared to some other projects. So we, I did follow up. John was here when we opened the bids. He and I have talked, I've called some of the references for that dairy roofing listed. One of which was Cumberland County. They had redone the police department down there recently. And the gentleman, the facilities manager down there had said they did great work. You know, they, he talked about they had copper in parts of their roof and this and that going on and had, you know, kinds of a little more intricate tie-ins online. As long as he was happy with even that, I mean, this, then I didn't hear a bad review. The price came in very favorable compared to what we were anticipating.
Yeah.
The only thing that Chief and I had talked about that wasn't included in the work, which a couple of companies had reached out about in the structural assessment report also recommended that we consider putting gutters on.
Right.
Right now, there's some downspouts. There's no gutters. I mean, the roof, it just falls and hits in front of the building. In front of the Bay Area, there is a catch basin that water can get to. I'm in front of the administrative end and the museum end. It just sits in the way the asphalt is moved over time. Anything that falls on the ridge of the asphalt falls back in towards the building. And it's kind of poached one of the doors there into the museum a little bit. It's not in great shape. And so that was one of the big recommendations, get this water directed away from the building. So we want to ask the board to consider that. You'll see in number two of the most possible motions to appropriate an additional amount up to seventy-five thousand to be able to cover that additional work.
And Derry can do the.
We're hoping. We haven't asked them yet.
The gutters, if not, yeah.
One of the respondents did give us that price.
Yeah, so they were in there.
If they were to do it. But they were the only ones. They had called ahead and I think had asked about whether there'd be gutters or not, and they just threw the price in.
Again, it's a straight run. It shouldn't be. Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Just a straight shot. Can't be anything too fancy. We're going and no, no, no copper or anything like that.
No.
Not doing seen this copper.
I vote no.
Yep.
Right.
What do, Andy, I have you off the top of your head, but what's what's in the reserve for the fire station? Do you know? Like putting you on the spot.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly. I can get to it if you give me a second.
No, that's all right, man. I we can check later. At least seventy-five thousand.
I can, I can get to it. So we had it in the budget.
Yeah, I should have looked earlier. I meant to ask you.
I should I?
My bad. No.
Hang on.
Expect you to have everything off the top of your head.
Tell you what it was two years ago.
It's true. It's true. Yep.
That's not helpful.
Yeah.
Fire station. We've been putting some healthy amounts in.
Yeah.
You might recall, we got work on the apron and asphalt to do coming up. There was talks about putting a pump station in for the sewer at some point. End of fiscal year twenty-four, we estimated two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in the balance. We appropriated fifty grand. So I'm estimating after expenses this, well, that was including this this bid here. So we were at three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars approximately. Five twenty-five's appropriation. I started run estimates on what we would spend this year and it included this. So.
I'm not bankrupting that.
No. We're in a great place. This was a project that the fire departments highlighted for the last couple of years in their work plan. They always look out ten years. They have been looking out for ten years. And so this isn't a surprise to us, other than the price came in a little bit lower than we estimated.
Yeah.
So I think we were figuring, we were estimating eighty in our work plan. So.
That's a bonus. So, awesome. Hold on, no, get that. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Dairy. Well, that should be Dairy, right? Staring on there. Dairy Roofing. I said Dairy, though. LLC to authorize a town manager to execute any necessary contracts related to the fire station roof replacement repairs project and two to appropriate up to seventy-five thousand dollars from the fire station building reserve to complete the roof replacement repair project.
Well, second.
There's gone a second. All right. Any more discussion? Those in favor? Right, let's get a roof on that place. Okay, we're skipping the audit for right now. Yeah, anyone to talk about the strategic plan, right?
Yes, please.
It's mainly one ninety.
Two hundred and seventy-two.
The audit pages are numbered. They end at one oh.
Get past one of them. Good. Awesome. Yep. Yeah. Copy like Warren P C or something. No, hang on to those reports. Yes. We did not budget for that much paper. Holy moly. Yeah.
So we've been, I've been you know, leading or sharing this every once in a while with the board about trying to pull together a three-year, multi-year strategic plan. With the comp plan having recently been passed and seeing just how many goals or strategies are identified in there. And it's not even down at the kind of like operational level yet. And so to understand staff time and budget constraints, you know, having the select board be able to kind of create your work plan, bringing in the comp plan goals as they were laid out for phase one, or there might be a couple of phase twos that we're already working on potentially. You know, and then to really take in, again, account what we do every day for operations and in staff capacity and hours is limited resource as well. And we budget, we don't really think of it. You know, but if this plan or any of the plans are going to get implemented, we need to make sure we're all on the same page, whether we, you know, have the budget to do it or the time and internal resources to complete these things. So just want to set everyone up for for success. You know, we'll be able to, you know, through this process, my goal would be able to make this a public document in a way that's more engaging. And that's through the software that we've that we're buying into. How we choose to measure progress and success on any of these is something we can, we would be talking about so that the public can see as we put those in, whether it's quarterly or monthly or kind of however that frequency is, they'd be able to see some of those metrics. The way we've been doing is it's like, okay, is it fifty percent complete or is it sixty percent? Which is not wrong. There's nothing wrong with that. But for some of the things, it's not just a it's kind of like an all or nothing. It it looks like, but I think some of the, you'll see when you get into the comp plan more in earnest, there's some things that are kind of in pieces. It's kind of like, there's a bigger goal, like say around add more housing. Sounds good, but what are the steps? How do we want to show that? Like in years one through three, these are the things we want to do. Otherwise, you just keep it at add more housing. It's like, well, okay, how do we, how do we show that? How do we measure that? To show the public that we're working towards it. So that's where I see the strategic plan really kind of getting more into the weeds. Pulling things from the comp plan, identifying, I mean, the legislature I don't think is finished yet, but there's a lot of bills that went through it again this year. You know, we just caught when, I think it was Monday, that there's another housing bill that's going to require another ordinance change similar to what we had a couple of years ago. You know, didn't pass with MMA support, but that's an example. There's things that come from the state that do impact and we need to make room for that could potentially push or move up ordinance updates. And if we know that's coming, we might as well consider putting some other things that we've been waiting on it. So I think, you know, it gives us a chance to kind of see the whole picture. And and give the the department some really good guidance going through the budget process.
Well, that's where the recent Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission commended Damascotta for an outstanding strategic plan. And on the contrary, said that Newcastle's was more visionary and not enough detail. So they were very impressed with.
With our comp plan?
Yeah.
Well, it's quite a, quite a job. There's a lot of folks involved and.
Yeah.
It was not solicited, just came up out of the conversation, a lot of, a lot of work into it. So.
But I think.
It was great exercise.
Yeah.
Sort of been involved with it.
I, this is really important, Andy, for for us to have this a service like this to help us because we are looking at increases in taxes, we're knowing that we're getting reassessed and knowing that our school bill has gone from like three to four million dollars. How are we going to manage our money?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really hopeful that it might be more than just this upcoming, well, the next upcoming budget, FY twenty-seven budget planning, but that we're, we get to a point where when we have conversations about budgets, whether it's the people you see out in the community or at the budget meeting in that process of of creating or at town meeting. You know, when a lot of times we react to a dollar sign or a percent increase or decrease and typically increase, but in in to move past that reaction, initial reaction of, well, it's up X number of dollars or we can't do ten percent, we, you know. But it's like, we need to under, we all need to understand, well, how do we bring it back in a way that we can show and acknowledge what we won't be working on? And so I'm hoping that this will bring forward the projects that the board and the budget committee can then say, okay, let's hold off on this, this and this project and knowingly put this maybe into next year. Where when we say, let's just, we got to cut it. You guys did that this past year. You know, with one of the board members saying we should cut three percent. And, you know, somebody took that earnestly and said, I can't find it. You know, we're working towards a lot of things, but I don't think we're presenting the budget in a way that links things to outcomes in a way that this could help us do.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, no, makes sense. No. Yeah, I mean, we.
Do you think this group, I looked at who who they've worked with. They've never worked with a town as small as ours.
Which one?
It's two different.
Oh.
The first one, you're right. The guy from California.
Which doesn't mean that they can't. Of course. Because, but they've worked on big things. We're not.
Yeah, yeah, the the second one, there was.
Was a little bit, yeah.
Seemed a little more appropriate to what we're looking at in our community. So.
Plus, Andy has some experience with some principles.
Yeah, the resilient communities, I I do know that the person who runs that company, they did live, do live on Vinylhaven. So I knew and worked with them out there. First, as they were an employee for the town when I was there. And then as a consultant, after they weren't an employee. They work as the, I think it's the title, their title is regional coordinator for the the COGS of kind of Portland area up to the, through the mid-coast for the climate action work. So if a town wants to, you know, say, apply to be a community resilience partner, which we are, that person is helping provide information about how they connect them with the the regional COGS to make that happen. They they help funnel, you know, information for grants and funding and and things like that. And so she's worked with a lot of the towns along the coast. I know I know her work personally, the Mayor Hondo Group. I've seen them. They they're they're more engaged with our managers association. They're they're at our conferences, doing a presentation, probably. The last three events we've had, they've been on one of the panels. And so I like, I liked him because he worked as a town manager for a while. And so he brings that real experience. And what I, I don't want to have the board do is go through a workshop or two to talk about a plan and not have something tangible at the backend. So I was like, I really focus, I need something that we can use as a tool. We can look at and move forward with and in and come up with a process that if we don't have to do quite this scale again with someone in the future, but could someone help us with a process that works for us? And then through this, we'll talk about whether you want to revisit that third year every year or do two years of the three years and come back and do another three year plan. That's all to be determined as part of this effort. But I do think one fits us a little bit better. Certainly it was also cheaper, but I I didn't see some of the examples that the Mayor Honda Group referenced that showed me what the output was. For that matter, I don't have it with the other one either. But I I trust the process that they would go through with us.
The motion sort of implies that you need to do some more due diligence or?
I don't think I'd.
Prove this, you're going to make this election?
I would, I would recommend we go with the resilient communities based on the cost and just my experience having worked with them, I would trust their their output.
Wasn't that much different, but I feel like the resilient communities are like you said, a little bit more in line with what we are.
We have money in the operating budget this year, where some of the planning funds were under, underspent, where the code officer, largely the code officer wasn't employed with us for Michael and I were doing that for five, four, five months, whatever it was. And the software, we didn't buy in to the software until this upcoming fiscal year. So that was another ten grand that we didn't utilize. So we have the money in this year's budget to be able to so making the recommendation or authorizing me to expend the money with this year's budget is why I'm putting it on this this agenda. But I am recommending of the two that we would go with the resilient communities unless there was major questions to follow up on still from the board or any reason to not recommend one yet.
I would recommend that we go with the resilient.
You said the, the.
Yeah, the funds are in the operating.
Operating budget, right? They were in there because we had your funds.
And if we, you sign a contract this year, does that include in this year's expenses?
We'd be able to, we'd be looking at a carry forward from this year's budget into next year at a future meeting. So probably that second meeting in July is when we'll bring the carry forward requests to you.
Yeah.
We'll get a chance to see some of the, I mean, as you can imagine, some invoices take three to four weeks sometimes to get. And so anything we've purchased by middle of June on, we kind of want to have a couple of weeks into that next year to understand what maybe still needs to be paid on this year's budget. So that, yeah, we'll, we'll have that. And so I've already kind of looked at potential ending balances for this year. And this is one of the projects that, you know, we're starting. I mean, Megan's already kind of working on some of the things that, you know, were highlighted in one of those. Just because she's interested in it. Wasn't expecting that, but pleasantly surprised. She's happy to take that on. It just, it's more likely now that we'll be able to have you know, some form of a document going to the budget process next year. Because if not, and we waited till the fellow came, we wouldn't be starting until September. So I'm very interested in trying to get as much as we can done this summer to prepare us for the workshops in the fall.
Great. Anybody have any questions, comments, any concerns on other one of these groups?
Yeah. Recommendation to.
I've had it down.
You'll leave it there. To authorize the use of funds for the town manager to execute any necessary contract with resilient communities.
A second. Andrea seconds. Any discussion? Those in favor? All right. Yeah, they seem like they would fit well, so the proposal, so community size and whatnot. So. Humanity size and whatnot, so.
Right.
Okay, yeah, and all right, we have.
You have that Lincoln County Regional Plan.
I was, I had forgotten, I was pulling it right out here, so. I have my little scribble on here, so, yeah, one more uh action item Andy's adding in at the end.
Admittedly, I was aware that they were going to be doing this um and. Kind of let it fall a little bit, um everything else we're working on. Um so the county's done fantastic work to um identify. That there's housing challenges, not just in the state, but particularly zeroing in on the county. Um and they, Dan had mentioned at the last meeting that they had commissioned a study to be done. Um they've identified parcels in every town. Um that could be built on. Um and their hope is that perhaps some of those. Parcels or others uh would kind of come forward as a next step, identifying that like if they don't have utilities to them. That could be certainly a deterrent from wanting to build out. Um and so one of the pieces they saw a need for and talking with communities is. Mapping and and doing a feasibility assessment on extending utilities. Some preliminary engineering kind of thing, where would pump stations need to be? Nothing that you could go to construction with, um put to bid for construction, but. Really start to identify that cost for development if if those parcels were to be built out. Um we've got money as well that we need to get an RFP together for two of them technically for. Kind of identifying parcels in town to do some concepts on. Um there are a couple of property owners that um I have talked to that might be interested in kind of partnering to look at the parcels to build. Um and. We'll take that up at another meeting, but for this one, um they want to have a letter of interest submitted um by the end of the week. Um and this is just a quick overview with the look, and I did quickly provide um a couple images there. And tried to highlight kind of the areas um in which the corridor for the utilities would be mapped. Um figure one is Upper Main Street. Um picking up from where it it um stops. It does on Main Street go a little bit past Hammond. Uh where the school entrance is, it does serve those um conduits there, I believe. Um but it doesn't go up Hammond Street, which is something the district's already been looking at. Um and trying to connect the bank and those houses on on that street. Um and water runs all the way up and across Route One now into Keen Woods. And so the thought would be. And I know in along the way, I think it was twenty seventeen or eighteen ish, they had come to the town and had gotten approval for. Um this planned kind of community. For their property and they haven't hit that next phase yet. And so I think they are still, last I knew, still interested in.
They are.
Banding that and putting twelve or fourteen units up there, so. Um and they were looking at putting a private septic in, so you know, this is something that would kind of complement where the water already goes. I know there's been talks about. One of the properties um along here that's also sold recently in the last year that um may have some development on it. Um in the coming year, years, um that would also likely want to have connection. Um from a development perspective. Your ability to to build density significantly increases when you're connected to the sewer system, so. Um it's in the growth area, um it complements where the water goes. We do know that there's a likelihood of of construction and and development to happen. In this area, and so that was one area that I was proposing. Um we kind of support looking at that for this work. Um the second one. Um and I think we only get one, um I'm just throwing a couple of ideas out there, and there's a third one Michael wanted me to mention um as well. Um the second one is uh Biskie Road. Um it currently stops, I believe, at the dialysis place, um is where the pump station is, and then. Water runs all the way out and makes a loop now around standpipe, but taking it down to. Um one sixty-two is Hager Enterprise, one eighty-five is where the rubbish, is it? Operates out of, um so taking it down to basically that wetland down there, um there's a lot of commercial activity in that stretch. It is zone for commercial, but it's also resource protection and a lot of wetlands. Um and so it would be in some way nice to kind of both, you know, see. And put those utilities, you know, in 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 that area for two reasons, you know, for the buildout potential in the commercial zone, but also protecting that resource. Um in doing that, also running up heater road on the part that's now townway.
Yeah.
Um which would then in the future have the chance to serve the um the trailer park there. Um the town property where the public works garages, we did just put a um a leach field in there, but it's to serve three. I think either three or four employees and a shower, which we don't have three or four employees or a shower yet, but I said. Let's not handcuff ourselves to just the two people with just this, and so give us a little bit of room to grow with it.
Can't have any people, we only have one shower.
You know, and still maintain a small footprint, um so we kind of tried to maximize that. Um but, you know, not knowing where things go with the conversation on the public works uh with with Newcastle. Um or our future, even without them, um. You know, that could have a need to have sewer there. So that's two places. The other one, uh Michael was wanting to throw out there as well is School Street. Um.
Okay.
The way, the way the sewer lines are are laid out right now, this part of Main Street's um typically served from Chapman Street. Um. I think, can't remember if Supplies Unlimited is connected or not, but the other houses on School Street beyond that are not. Um what, a sewer comes up in a forest main up over High Street to get to the treatment plant. Um but there's a gap on High Street where there isn't house services, and they had to put a pump station in to be able to, and basically each of them to be able to get into the forest main. Or finish connecting the the service line. Um. You know, and there's some larger parcels that exist on on School Streets, you get just past High Street heading south. Um ish, um and I don't know that there's desire or not of those property owners. Um to ever do that, but certainly it becomes more possible if it's there.
I was gonna ask the question, because. They've been sitting on that property for a long time.
Right. The other interesting piece of that is that the corner of School Street. That parcel there, I think it's Mason Sears owns, um part of that footprint on that side. Um going back towards Damascotta Hardware and in the. Where the skilled nursing facility is gonna go, um is in the Tiff District. And so there would be advantages for the town to think about looking at that area. Um to see the sewer go, um in the hopes that the Tiff District might start, you know, performing a little bit more.
Yeah, that'd be ideal. Has anyone reached out to the sanitary district to to get their thoughts on this?
Um in a general sense, I mean, they um for this aspect of it, you know, Scott's certainly open to. Having a feasibility done and getting some estimates on what it would take to do it. Um you know, it still comes back to when it's time to build, who's gonna do that, who's gonna pay for that? Um and that's where ideally, you know, you've got a couple of people in an area wherever you're looking to do this, that you got maybe two parcels that all of a sudden say, yeah, I'm gonna build, no, I want to build. And their scale is at a, is such that they're looking at a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to put a private system in. All of a sudden, that's a pretty healthy chunk of change that goes towards a matching grant if they're available. Um a lot of these ones that have been out there have been eighty, twenty matches. You know, the number out there is, you know, a million, a million and a half mile. Um both of these are less than a mile extension. Um you know, twenty percent of say a million, you know, all of a sudden, there, one project was looking at putting close to that money, that amount in there. So if you find a. A section here where there's more than one thinking about it. Um at the same time, then maybe they pull the resource together and provide the match.
Yeah.
In the Tiff District, the town might think about doing it to make those parcels more developable, um to try and.
Right.
You know, again, build out more in the Tiff District and and make that work. It's a tool right now that's being underutilized because we don't have development happening in it yet. Um hopefully, the skilled nursing facility does go forward. They've paid all the permits to proceed, but I haven't heard of anything starting yet.
Yeah, I see that jumpstart something in there and.
The apartment buildings behind Ledgewood Court haven't, um I don't think they've pulled together the funding streams yet to be able to move forward. Um but they they had also came and got approval to build, it's like thirty more units back there.
Yeah.
So this, this is pretty straightforward. I mean, there's no cost to it, there's.
Right.
There's a lot to be potentially gained.
Yeah, they just want the formality of the board, you know, kind of saying like, yes, the town is interested in moving forward with this. I do need to reach out to Scott. I know that they're about fifty or sixty percent net capacity with the lagoon system they currently have. They do have room for a fourth lagoon, but they haven't had to build that yet.
Yeah.
Their impact fees, my understanding is their impact fees that people pay go towards being able to expand that, maintain or expand that system. Um you know, so presumably that, there's a balance there to help make that happen when the time comes, but I think working with them. The other piece that we don't really talk much about and Michael and I were working on today is acknowledging that, you know, the need for housing, but also. You know, bringing the school in on the conversation to make sure that there's a carrying capacity, if you will, there for the school. It can still only have X number of students in it, just like this room can only have X number of people in it. Um and so making sure the space. In the needs of the school are are considered, um and it's not just one town that would be doing housing that would maybe impact that. Um and so I think, you know, as those conversations continue, bringing in the district and the school. Um are important, not just them, but certainly them, um to make sure that we aren't, aren't gung ho on the housing, but then. Unknowingly creating a initiative, the school's now facing a ten million dollar expansion. So there's, there's, you know, making sure we're all on the same page there and the timing works and and everyone can. Make sure they aren't surprised, if you will. The district's not gonna want to find out, you know, you know, this project's got approved and oh, by the way, now the fourth lagoon needs to be built, we're not ready, we're five years out.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think it's important to all be on that.
Everybody on the same page and the same conversation, so. Yeah, okay. But it doesn't, yeah, there's any reason why we can't move ahead with a letter of interest, right? No.
Yeah, so there, one of the things that we're working with them on, you see the list there of of things they want. They want us to identify a parcel. Um that's interested, not committed to necessarily, but interested in building out. Um and so I followed up with them and mentioned in along the way is an example at the end of that line there essentially. That has already put a project in, they are interested, they're still looking to pull it together. Um so I'm hoping like that. In of itself would would be reasonable. Going down Biskie Road, I don't necessarily have anyone per se right now. I mean, I've talked to a couple of people that have. Properties down there and um one of them is, yeah, I'm curious about what I'm gonna do with the property, but. I don't have any plans right now, but I mean, this is a piece of the puzzle without any, without the sewer there, and again, it dramatically changes what they're gonna do. Um so if I can get them to um, you know, kind of give their, yes, I'm interested, um I can check the box there. I don't know if the board has between those three kind of build out areas, if there's one in particular that you want to. You know, see us proceed with. I think we're only gonna have the chance to do in one if all six towns that they're kind of looking at with with utilities in them. Primarily, um apply, they're only thinking of doing three or four communities. So it could be, I don't think we'll do more than one site, and it could be that we don't get one at all.
So in in a lot of ways, sixteen units or whatever, uh what what's their intended purpose? I know, I know what they do now with some of the available space, but is it more of the same of that or?
They're looking to have spaces for respite for caregivers.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, but they're fundraising, they're very cautious, they move when they have money.
So that, they're, they're able to serve that now through the the house, um and they're.
The house is also rented, they have rental. Places in the house.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that was for the respite care currently is what they're able to serve.
Anyone can rent a room there.
Oh.
I have a friend who just like was there for a week.
That's interesting.
Okay.
Now we revisit the. Taxable.
I think it's partly to help them raise money.
Yeah.
To do the respite part.
You mean for profit? Do that at a different meeting.
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you, Andrew.
Um so I mean, my understanding is that what they, what I've heard them share, and I was at a meeting. Four year ago, I think, with them on their property and, you know, building out to basically create a community that could support one another within their respite care is part of it. Um you know, but also it goes a little bit further than that with their mission. Um and so it's a mix of um. I don't know if I can remember, I think there was a couple like smaller, like one unit places, there was a couple that might be more like a duplex, so they were gonna try and do a hybrid of of solutions there. Um and maybe put the barn to more use, um. And so it's all great. I think there were three or four phases that they presented to the town years ago.
It's been a while, but yeah, I remember them walking through different phases that they're gonna do.
Yeah, so it's to continue to serve their their mission of, you know, helping the rest, provide respite housing or care for those providing that. Um you know, and then expand, kind of create a community there. Sort of of communal living.
Lot of community outreach with helping people and they run. Meetings and seminars and all sorts of.
Certainly be satisfying the community service need within along the way, but but we, as we all know. What we really, really need is uh low income housing for employees. And is it, are you saying that would be mixed in?
I don't know.
I think they're focused on seniors anyways.
Yeah. Um so the other, the other little spur on that one for Main Street comes up back metal a little bit and.
Yeah.
And would kind of, the idea of that would be to map out um getting. Act, you know, utilities to our property. We own those thirteen, I think acres behind the cemetery. The cemetery and the school.
Um what one is that here?
Um that's five dash. You go up, sit down, five sixteen dash one.
Okay, that, that's a fairly large parcel.
Right, and the school's three, three dash fourteen.
Okay.
Um so it busts the school and it's behind the cemetery, um and there's that little. Weird little piece there that gets access to uh Back Meadow Road. Um the only other way to try and access it would be through the school or potentially through a property off of Hammond Street, or maybe. The CMP utility, you know, corridor.
That's what that light green line thing is.
It's all cut out. Um so again, not proposing that it happen, but it's like if we're looking at the future potentials of any of this, where sewer should go and. That's another area where you're not gonna want to try to put a septic in if you can bring the sewer in, so it's the feasibility, you know, you know, assessment and.
Yeah.
Figured I'd add that as part of the footprint.
Do you have a recommendation of these choices?
And I think they're all good without any one project. I mean, if I had to say what's just more likely to be built out, I'd probably think that. The Main Street piece.
That's what I would.
Your one.
The best, yeah.
I agree with figure one, the growth potential's there.
Right.
You're hampered by wetlands a lot on figure two.
Yeah, there's a lot of wetland in there.
There is something about School Street though, just. For a second, as it does open the Tiff District. There is gonna be some construction potential along. What, what does that road that goes into the sanitary district? Piper Mills. Um there, I know one of the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission sites they located was. Out behind Rising Tide, I think that extends up. Extends up to. Daryl, do you know about that property?
I may know something about that property.
It was identified in twenty before.
I'm not signing anything.
Yeah, what do you think about that? And and so.
I'm staying.
The access thought to be the School Street or.
Right.
Or Main Street, but um one way or the other. So. And and also, the other advantage to that location, just off the top of the head, would be is that you could walk to downtown from there. Where you couldn't walk from really Upper Main Street, it's not really practical. But you, you know, you, I mean, you could connect sidewalks onto High Street or.
Good point.
Or extend, and we're talking about setting sidewalks from. Downtown up to at least the school, right?
It will be going to the school with the partnership with the state.
That's what I mean, so.
Yeah, beyond the school, I don't think the boards really talked about that with a sidewalk at this point that I'm aware of. The sidewalk.
Right, right, so. So anyway, so so there'd be ways to increase walkability as well. That would be good.
Right. All very valid and good points, yeah.
You wanna, I mean, we can, we can make a motion to approve the letter and you and Michael want to flesh it out a little bit more between the spots? I mean, it's, I know, because I'm, it's, it's, Dan makes a good point, and then I I like. I I think for me right now, the the Biskie Road one is out.
Yeah, I I do too.
Between Route One, definitely, and then, and then Dan makes some good points on.
Could lose. You know, the opportunity for funding if we can get it.
For the. Yeah, we'll do is we'll move the mo, we'll make the motion to approve the.
Right.
Letter intent, but we, I I think between the two areas, if you have to pick one. Um I I would be comfortable with either one, and if you and Michael have, you know. If one of those moves. Either way, you know, for you. Um. It makes, both of them make sense, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for what Dan's saying, both of those have the advantages that way, and I think.
They do, yeah.
Um.
Put them both in.
The only other thing I'd say with the Main Street one, not trying to sway one way or the other, but on that same vein is the bikeability piece. In the bike resolve that's been signed by the board, um that's the only thing I could think. I don't know that I see sidewalks per se right now without knowing what's exactly gonna be built up that way.
Yeah.
Going in there.
Yeah.
Um and to be able to put bike lanes and sidewalks in places is very hard, and with the width you need to get through there. Um but one or the other in most places, like in places like that road are achievable. Um so I don't know if at some point the board has a larger conversation about, you know, where sidewalks and we want to continue with bike lanes potentially. And I could see that, you know, when you run your utilities, that's a fantastic opportunity with that right away to be able to put a bike lane or a sidewalk over the top of those.
Right.
Um, you know, it's about the same thing with Bristol Road, you know, the strong desire to see shoulders, just shoulders even. That are, that are built going down to the town line, like so when you hit town line in Bristol, you 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 you're kind of the similar, um there's bigger challenges. You know, construction wise, um that we face that they didn't have on that end, but um if the utility line does go, someday ever go down through there. Take that opportunity to build back a a finished shoulder above it and. At least get one side of the road.
I, I don't think they're any harm in putting both, I mean, they. I I don't think they made any harm in putting both. I mean, they, maybe they're asking for one, but there any harm in putting both in the letter and then that, I mean, then they might look at it and say, wow, they really got their stuff together. There are all kinds of places we could.
They say narrow it down. We can come back and say, okay.
And you could, you could narrow it down, but it wouldn't, I mean, what are we going to lose, right?
So if you see an excavator in front of your property, I know what it is.
I'll uh, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to submit a a letter of interest on the board's behalf to the LCRPC Housing Infrastructure Project Opportunity for the areas identified in the company memo that we just talked about. Um, seconds, any discussion?
So we're, so we're not going to.
So I I think we're in agreement on the the Biskie Road one. Yeah, it sounds like if we can just have the route one and and I'm just still put one on there.
Just identifying both.
I agree.
You don't have to go by the rules.
You could pay the county.
Might get them both done if no one else signs up.
That's what I mean. You never know, right?
Throw them both, flip the wall, see what sticks. Um, did we vote? We didn't vote. All those in favor? All right, we all voted. Okay. Sometimes I get carried away and I forget to go for a vote. Oh. Um, yeah, no, it sounds good, Andy. Thanks for coming up, you know, getting on top of this stuff, so. All right, and we have, where is that? That's the last of the official action times, isn't it? All right. So we'll move along into, Andy, you've got a couple of things under select board discussion items, fire station insulation project and fire station municipal building LED project.
There were two other RFPs that were out at the same time. The roofing one was.
Yep.
Um, the lighting.
At all, and I didn't see.
Yeah, lighting RFP did have one response.
Okay.
Um, it was for almost thirty five thousand dollars to do lighting there and here. Um, this this upper level was going to get.
Creating everything in in interior.
Yep. And then the fire station, the whole thing was going to get LED lights. Um, so that came back more than double what we thought it was going to be.
Okay.
So I've opened it. I've I'm not asking you to consider that. Um.
Was the cost was so high because of labor or the actual fixtures?
I will say that we did not identify the type or number of fixtures in the RFP, which is a problem. There's no consistency. You know, we had a couple of people come in, look and do an audit. Um, one of them that I talked to um, directly, they didn't submit a bid. I don't know if it was timing at that point because they think it came two days before it was due at that, I think it was two days before it was due when they came. Um, but really to be able to be on, you know, on par with whoever's submitting, they should all know that they're doing next number of fixtures and not guessing that, well, we can take this room. Well, we don't need this many light fixtures in here. I'm going to reduce the count by four. I'm going to replace all that are here with LEDs. And so that right from the get go, this one room, you might be twice the cost between the two. Um, and so I think we need to probably look at putting that one back out with a little more of a known quantity that they're going to be bidding on. Um, what it was, what it called for and was tied to was more performance, which is also a little tricky. Um, I mean, there's rooms like this room, to assume the lights are on all the time for eight hours a day or ten hours a day is inaccurate. Um, in our office spaces, some of the staff don't have their lights on at all most days. Um, but if they're going to run the numbers to show a savings of based on the number of fixtures and assume number of hours, and this happened with a community, one of the towns, one of the contractors worked with, they went through after the first, they said, we didn't see the savings. Well, there's a lot of assumptions built into the numbers of the savings, you're right. And it's like, you know, when they look at the cost of having a TV or refrigerator and you see it on the box, here's how much it costs you each year. It's like, well, it depends how much you have it on and you know, did you leave the door open a lot or those kinds of things?
Fuel mileage.
I think, you know, we just needed to, we need to tweak that. Um, there was no one that bid for the insulation work at the fire station. And the hope was that someone from the, one of the roofing companies might be open to doing that work while they're there, but no one bid on that. And those two are funded in part by the efficiency ma, or the um, climate action grant.
Yeah, yeah, the partnership.
And that's another reason why I'm not suggesting we entertain this one until we have a better sense of what the other one might cost. I need to understand if no one bid on one of them. Do we put it back out and hope someone does again? Um, do we, do we have the ability with that grant restrictions to just solicit three quotes? Um, and move forward? Um, can we try and do any of it in-house um, somehow? And the volunteers or staff and then just buy the products directly. So I got to figure out a little bit more, but because these are both tied, I think the grant was fifty, fifty thousand dollars, I believe. Um, and so we expected to pay some of these improvements out of our reserve funds, um, like the insulation, the insulation work. Um.
Yeah.
Thirty four thousand for the, for the lighting and we were expecting about seventeen. Um, and the insulation, I think we were at.
Yeah, and that one.
Who have we had come in to assess how many fixtures we need and and what kind?
We haven't.
Okay.
Part of the issue with the RFP is it's just, it's kind of.
Yes, a manufacturer would come in and do that.
They don't, manufacturer doesn't have to do it. I mean, we could do it ourselves. I mean, just figure out.
Come that they would, well.
I mean, give them a floor plan essentially, which we have and say, here's the fixtures in this room. Here's the fixtures in this room. Both buildings might even have electrical plans in a, in a way that might maybe tell us what went in. I mean, what was posed on paper and what went in at the end of the day sometimes differ, but.
If he has built, doesn't use sometimes.
On the installation project, how do you identify bidder, potential bidders?
I mean, when we submit, when we send out the RFPs to people, um, with that one, we didn't identify potential bidders. They need to be a qualified vendor with efficiency main.
Yeah.
I didn't with with that one. With the electrical one, I did send it to a couple that we have worked with, like um, Mid Coast Energy and um, so the guys that just moved in up there, AOS is um, tomorrow. Yeah, they're both qualified partners with the state, work with both of them. So I wanted to make sure they knew this was open.
What am I getting at is we we got a bid now that we just approved from an out of state company to do the roof at the fire station. So maybe if we cast a bigger net.
Yeah, they were all cast in the same place. And what's interesting is there's companies out there, you might experience this from time to time. There's companies out there that their job is to, with AI, I think it's helping them to just scour locations we post with Main Municipal Association. Um, again, looked at the qualified vendor list and put out some of the ones we have worked with. But these companies are out there, all their job is to do is to find RFPs and then pump it out to their, their source, which is probably why we got the out of state folks.
That's when your phone rings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and they're very persistent. They want to have updates on, when's the decision going to be, what is the size? And however they're getting it out, typically for me to access that, they usually have paywalls and you usually have to pay to get beyond what they're, what they're sharing sometimes, but um, they're the ones I think really putting it out there. Otherwise, we rely on Main Municipal Association, our website, um, and then just direct contacts, paper.
Wonder if any of the local town or towns, not to Camden, have done any of that kind of work and do they have any vendors? Yeah, I believe nobody's bidding on.
Does it make sense to at least to um, rebid the RFP for the, the lights with more detail?
I think that does, yes.
Yeah, get that that tied down.
And I'll find out, um, Lincoln County had helped us pull these together and find out if we can move away from the emphasis on the savings as a metric and just put it, you know, or or add at least that these are the fixture counts of these types and whether we, you know, the one of the trickiest things like for me, and it would have to go to to a manufacturer, basically, it's like, what lights do we want to put in? Do we want someone to bid on the same light going in? And then that starts to get well over our heads as to like, well, what do we want to select? And if anyone's ever tried to put lighting in a, in a building, there's a lot of options.
Well, did like Mid Coast bring in a Gilman or anybody to look at it?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
I mean, a simple walkthrough, they can tell you what, you know, with efficiency and output of those LEDs, you're probably cutting this lighting in half. And then needing a dimmer.
Right.
Yeah. And I mean, they they do that on a visit.
Yeah, they may have come in and we work with them. They've been in our buildings. They've had our plans for both facilities before, so I don't know if they necessarily need to. They did reach out a couple of times with me and they didn't put a bid in, but.
Yes, it's almost like to to get to refine the RFP, you need, you need an audit. Do an audit and say, yeah, you can, you really just put one in the middle, you know, whatever and and.
Like a, like have an audit done, but. As it is, the company that did bid were from Indiana. I think.
No doubt.
I'm guessing what they do is they probably source some more local folks to do it, but.
They charge.
They have work in Maine, um, but I was like.
Okay, so, yeah, so the LED RFP, we'll refine that and then scratch our heads on the insulation one right now.
Yeah, I mean, if if if, if the program will allow us, I think we might maybe just need to go the route of we hire the contractor to do the work in that program, that grant's going to buy, I think just buy the insulation. We anticipated paying for the labor anyways. So if if we can change it in a way that just sources the product.
What do we have a time on that, the grant? Is there a?
Yep, we need.
Inpiration?
We need to finish, we just asked for an extension and got approved.
Okay.
To go to the end of June, I believe, another year, basically.
Oh, okay. So we got, all right, so it's not, not the end of this June.
Right.
But.
He's another winner.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. We might get it done before that.
All right, so we've got some time. At least we're not going to run out of the money, so. Nothing. All right. Well, keep keep us in a little, Andy. Thank you. Um, yeah, we'll move along. Um, select discussion times. Anybody have anything they want to, before we go into a executive session?
Well, I just wanted to thank the town and Andy there who intend to go down Westview Road to check out the culverts and do some repairs. And I'm uh, given the benefit of the doubt, that's not going to be too disruptive, but it's been a long time since they were done and you might recall about eight years ago was a big issue about that. Uh, that's a town. So it could, this could be a positive sign.
Hey, Michael.
Yeah, routine, routine range work, it's just gone too many years to the point where it's a little bit more than just simple routine.
Oh, yeah.
Some of those culverts have been plugged for too long. The bottoms are probably rusted out of them now.
Yeah.
It's on schedule, Tom.
We've hired, hired a contractor to do it.
Supposedly they were maintained fifteen for fifteen years every year and they were in the budget and they were never maintained for those fifteen years, even though.
We've always had a list of culverts in this, been on the work plan, culverts. Then, yeah, there are some that are getting caught up on it, so.
I mean, if you can do it every year, some of it's just as simple as going with a, either the pressure washer potentially or you know, worst case scenario, a fire truck to kind of blow those out. Um, but as soon as you let them start accumulating, after one season, you're probably in trouble if you don't come back again.
Awesome.
The main, the main problem with that street though is up to um, Drew Sanford's house. That's where the flooding happens. Beyond that, well, it isn't an issue, but also um, the Milliners, which is the second house down on the left, they get a lot of flooding through there historically. That's a, that's a big problem because it comes off the road. It comes off of uh, the hotel.
Dan, anything they had tonight?
No, I did, but it did occur to me as, like I mentioned, walking up the hill, um.
Yeah.
Warm outside.
You did notice that.
We're going to take our climate change now?
Does the town have a warming stage? I mean. I get that wrong. Um, hey, you know, they always talk about, you know, when it's too hot, go to a certain place and to cool down. Does the town have a place like that or? Have we ever even considered it?
I know we've.
We probably didn't.
Considered it and 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 the same in the winter, um, for a warming shelter. I mean, this, this building can be used during operational hours. Um, I know some town halls do that just during the regular hours. Um, people can come in here. Um, I think a lot of times, um, coordinated or otherwise, um, the Y tends to um, put them, I know in the winter time they've done that, put the message out that folks are welcome to their facility. They're there, they're open. Um, I don't know that our EMA director um, had coordinated anything per se. I hadn't reached out to do so.
Yeah, my guess is the Y.
Library too.
Would be the new logical places.
Libraries are another one.
Yeah, it's not super, super cozy and comfy in the bedroom, but it's available.
Yeah.
There are plugs here.
Yeah. Dan, we can put a sprinkler on your lawn?
Please.
Get the old sprinkler out there.
We did talk about.
Yeah.
Some of the staff talked about that last summer when it got hot for a couple of days about the front lawn year.
I'm sure we have people that don't have AC and can't.
Well, most certainly.
To.
Yeah.
Run it.
But it was a good point. I, I mentioned that walking in, like you hear about, you know, the winter and warming stations and things like that. And then like, yeah, we don't, never really come across that with like, if I need to cool down, I don't have AC or something. That's a good point.
I can follow up with them and and see if our EMA, um, Steve O'Brien is our.
Yeah.
Um, EMA director and John Roberts is our deputy director, so.
Yeah, be a good question to ask before we refer people to places.
Yeah, I know. They they've opened the fire station before for more, more for, you know, say in a winter storm and someone's completely without power and wants to be able to plug into something for medical reasons or something like on occasions, they have the ability to then bring someone in. It's not a great thing, but there is bathroom, shower and um, cooking facility there if need be. There's cots to sleep on.
AC too.
But.
The ambulance service has a.
Hi, Andrea.
I wanted to say how pleased I am that the, the benches look fabulous.
I was hoping you were going to bring up the benches.
How can I not? But they do.
The the town, so uh, the town staff took care of the, they they did the benches, yeah.
Yeah, they were able to.
Text you the first thing that morning. Get down here.
Sally was right there.
Yeah.
First thing.
They were able to pressure wash them um, and get that lichen mossy growth off of it.
Yeah.
Um, and actually surprisingly, to my surprise anyways, kind of took the gray out of it. And so
Yeah.
It brought back some of that mahogany uh, color to it. They aren't treated with anything. They weren't recommended to be treated unless we wanted to plane them down again and we did not want to go through that effort.
And they're stable. I know they took a little bit off the ends and and so we didn't need any cross supports or anything that they, they're working out well, so.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on them, you know, every, more often than we had. I think it sat there for, was it ten years or so?
They haven't been touched, yeah.
And so we'll keep an eye on those. I think it was just, they five inch lags maybe on there. Um, so they did cut about four to six inches off each end, um, but you still fit three people in there reasonably.
And are we still talking about um, putting in a handicap to get to the, the?
Uh, so there's a reclaimed area down by the pump station. And the kayak racks on part of it and there's a table on part of it. And so the idea was that that was accessible to folks um, seeing a wheelchair or other, um, the um, guys did talk about taking one of the older tables. We replaced most of the tables this winter. Lowe's had a phenomenal deal on built picnic tables. They were like a hundred and eighty bucks built.
The material.
John's like, hey, do you want me to get a couple? I'm like.
Yes, buy them and take them apart and save the material.
Yeah. Um, and they, and they had pressure treated bottoms, um, even. And so it was screaming deal to have them already built. So we just, they, he painted them.
If we don't have one that has like an overhang.
Not yet. But he, he had talked about taking one of the in good shape, older ones that we didn't retire um, and taking the the top boards off and just buying longer two by sixes and making it so it does without having to buy something special because those can get to be seven to twelve hundred bucks if you want to buy something new.
That will be.
That's all weather outdoor.
Yeah.
Um, but in this case, we can just buy, I think it's four, either three or four, two by sixes and treat them and put it on.
No, that's good. Yeah, there's good access down there so they can pull in that flat spots already there so you can go right in from that end and so.
Be really nice to have.
I've got, yeah, questions. Uh, there are more boating uh, spots now than ever, it seems, like like along the front there, yeah.
Shouldn't be.
They've always been there.
They put the same amount of permit holder spots.
What are the?
Morning owners. Solid red ones are Newcastle Realty.
Oh.
So.
That was a, yeah, that was. Them from way back, yeah.
Their deed allows them to identify four spaces in the town parking lot and that was in trade for um, the reversionary language, I believe, that was in those deeds that should the town not use this as a parking lot.
Okay.
Those property owners were able to recover that property essentially.
Yeah, I didn't see any sign.
A lot of questions on that one.
They, they got someone coming back to stencil them.
Oh, okay.
They did that last year.
Because I didn't see any sign.
Yeah.
Well, you, you're in your red car, so blend it in. You couldn't see it. Yeah. Daryl, what do you got to say down there?
Think I'm good, sir. Uh, as I get more comfortable, I'll get more vocal.
All right, so and uh, I'm uh, I won't, I won't add anything tonight. I've got nothing to say this evening, so, yeah, but it has been, has been hot. So everybody's been safe and drinking plenty, plenty of liquids and whatnot, so.
You have anything to say, Michael?
And I was just going to ask, Michael, you came in at the end here, but we've, we've gone through, I think Andy can bring it to speed on the, the Lincoln County stuff, so we're gonna, yeah, we should throw everything at it and see what sticks. Yeah, I don't care if they say one, we're gonna. It shows that we're prepared. Awesome. So we're going to um, we're going to move into executive session. Um, I'll make a motion here in just a, just a minute and uh, then we can roll uh, kick everybody out unfortunately. And then while we're doing that, we can, we can sign everything, guys, so. kick everybody out unfortunately. And then while we're doing that, we can, we can sign everything, guys. So, um, so I'll make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six F, which I believe is a, not personnel, personal.
Um, what is? It has to do with confidential information.
Yeah, confidentiality.
Okay.
Meeting. It's a weird one, but use it very often, so. Yeah, if you would. I know it's, I know it's six F, but I, I can't remember the exact word. So Amanda would be mad at me if I don't tell her I didn't know it, so. Um, this is a motion. Do I have a second? All right, Tom seconded and discussion. All those in favor? Okay, so one, two, three, four. So, all right. Thank you, everybody. We'll give everybody a minute to clear out. While we're doing that, I'm going to pass these down to Daryl down here.